Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Franklin Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, January 25, 2023. Meeting has been properly posted. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Dr. Khan.
Here.
Dr. Beer?
Here.
Mr. Spray?
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion's made by Mrs. Witkowski, seconded by Dr. Khan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Pleasant View Elementary School presentation. Ms. Imperiali, please.
Good evening. We're getting there. Well, thank you for having us. I'm Ashley Imperiali, Principal at Pleasant View, and I have a wonderful group of fourth graders from Ms. Whitman's classroom here. Do you guys want to introduce yourself?
My name's Peyton.
My name's Olivia.
My name's Colton.
And I'm Claire.
And I'm Ms. Whitman.
So we're here tonight to talk about Pleasant View. If you want to, I don't know who has the slides, but... So, we always talk about Pleasant View, trying to put all the pieces together around... You've seen the gears all year, right? So, we're really here to talk about what we've been focusing on at Pleasant View around high-performing teams and high-performing classrooms. So, we've done a lot of work as a building, talking about like, what does a high-performing classroom look like, sound like, feel like? And then how do we work in our grade-level teams to really get to that place? And if you want to go on to the next slide here, one thing we've been really focusing on in this second semester is our high-performing teams using evidence-based teaching and learning practices to really like leverage what's best in the classroom and the kids that are in front of us. If you want to go to the next slide. And Ms. Whitman's classroom is a really great example of the fourth-grade team. You know, there's a visual up there around plan, do, study, act. So, you're planning your classroom instruction, you're delivering it, you're actually doing it, and then you're studying the results to see our kids learning, you know, what's going on there. And then you act and adjust, and you continue the cycle. And Ms. Whitman is a great example of a classroom that really utilizes all of our resources in the district between her planning with her grade-level teammates, our instructional coaches, which we have a wonderful one standing here supporting us, and really digging in on how to meet all the learners in her classroom. So, Ms. Whitman's going to talk about something called flexible grouping, and how, and our kiddos here will then talk about their experience with that, a couple examples, and why they really find it engaging to their learning.
All right, so, what are flexible groups? Flexible groups are really important to our classroom. So, we have a chunk of time, about an hour or so, where we are able to separate our class into four groups. It's about five to six students per group, I would say. And we have different tasks that the students can complete during this hour. However, all four groups are doing something different. One of the groups has to be working with me at all times. All the students get to meet with me for at least 15 minutes, including time that they need with me during math, during reading, or writing, or science. So, this is additional time that I get to work with my students. We like to create groups because students are at different places, they have different strengths and areas that they want to grow in. So, with these flexible groups, I'm able to use all of this wonderful data that I learned from our instructional coach to utilize and to really create differentiated instruction for all the students in the classroom. So, no group is doing the same thing with me. We focus on math, we focus on reading, social groups, writing. All those things with me is where we can converse, students can really speak their voices and ask me questions in a small setting. I know sometimes it's really nerve-wracking to raise your hand right in class, so it gives them that voice to ask like, hey, Ms. Whitman, I'm feeling really iffy about this still. Can you help me? Right? And they get help from their peers. So, what I like to do is go through confering notes, so notes from the class that day, look at assessments, formative and summative assessments that we take, conferencing with the kids, talking with them, how they're feeling, looking at their running records, looking at their exit tickets for the day. I really look at everything when deciding how to plan these groups. But the biggest thing I try to do is responsive teaching with them. So, sometimes I might not use the plan, I might be, what questions do you have? And then I make it right on the spot, but it always matches the standards of what we're learning in the class that day or what we're learning about in the future. So, some of the things we do on Academy that aligns with our standards as well as Zern, where it aligns with our curriculum resources, Eureka, we words their way, always do word work, that's one of the options. Hiking pal, Epic, where they can read. Second step, which is social-emotional learning. Social groups are a big fun one because we get to chat and create some social skills together. And of course, Lucy Culkin, we take all the different skills and standards that we're working on in class, we'll break it down into a more explicit instruction group.
So, the fourth graders wanted to share just two examples of their, I think, favorite flexible math groups that they've had, or activities they've had at some point. So, they're going to explain two of them, show you one, and then two of them want to share just why they think flexible groups are so engaging and why they really look forward to them.
The first activity we like is Eliminate It.
Eliminate It is a game where you have four numbers, and you have to choose all the ones that don't match. So, if you're doing 12, 9, 24, and 34, 9 would be the most one that's odd out because it doesn't have many ones, so it's most of the ones that are odd out.
A thing I like about Eliminate It is people come up with different answers, and you could be wrong, but most of the time you're right.
And we also have Create Your Own Word Problems, which is where you choose two numbers, like 30 times 2, and you would add it into your own problem. Like, if someone had 30 footballs, and then the other person had times 2, then that, like double 2, and then you'd tell them how to solve it, and then they would need to solve it on their own.
A thing I like about Make Your Own Word Problem is different people come up with different like stories to go with the same word, like the same equation.
These flexible groups allow us to practice skills like problem-solving, writing, speaking and listening to others, and checking and improving your work.
The thing I like about flexible groups is if you like miss school, like at a doctor's appointment, or you're just out sick, you get to learn the lesson that you missed. For example, if you miss math, like a multiplication, in flexible groups, when you meet with Ms. Whitman, she will help you learn it.
I like flexible groups because it helps you learn what your strengths are and what you still have to work on, and it gives you time to work with Ms. Whitman on what you need to improve and what you're still good at.
And that's our fourth graders. But I think really the highlight I want to put to it all is there are so many content areas, but I think the flexible groups really give the students a chance to engage deeper in, as Claire said, some of their strengths, but also learning what maybe those areas are where they need to grow in. It also really allows for that responsive piece for, you know, kids do miss for appointments, and how do you make up that time? Or, you know, everyone kind of catches on at different opportunities. So, it does give that kind of opportunity to check in with the teacher, to go further if you're getting it, if not, to have that kind of sense of comfort or safety in the classroom to really ask those questions and get some additional help. So, it is really responsive. Yep.
So, while they're not working with me, I forgot to suspension this. They are working independently on one of those tasks that were up there. So, they're really working on their own independence as learners and having that autonomy in their learning and taking that next step to create goals for themselves and to be independent, take charge of their own learning, without a teacher by. So, that's really nice, too.
Thank you, everyone.
Good job.
Now, I would have chosen 34 because it's not divisible by 3. In case you were wondering.
I appreciate that.
I thought they were talking about odd.
No, I think they were just saying you have to find, like, pick one number that doesn't fit with the others, for whatever reason you choose.
Good job. Smile for your moms, smile for your parents. Here you go. There you go. Do it for the gram. Good job, guys.
All right, parents and kids, feel free to stay, but also feel free not to stay if you don't want to. There's a reason we do this at the beginning. All right, as that's happening, we'll talk about community comment. Participants under this agenda item must be residents of Franklin Public Schools or parents/guardians of Franklin Public School District. Students must state for the record their full name and address. Must limit their statements to three minutes with a maximum of 15 minutes for any and all comment. The community comment is related to the agenda, to an agenda item. The board may respond to that comment either at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The board may not discuss a comment or question that does not relate to an agenda item per Board Policy Administrative Rules 8300. And Tracy Zernicki is the first card chosen.
Good evening.
Oh.
I don't know if I need this or not. My name is Tracy Zernicki. I live at 5495 West Cobblestone Way in Franklin, Wisconsin, and I have a daughter in high school and a special-needs daughter who should be in the 18 to 21 program but is not. So, if you give me one moment of your time, I'd like to speak to something. Recently, Forest Park Middle School has shared with parents that there are some changes on the horizon for course selection. This pertains to eliminating Core Plus classes and decreasing an encore period for student schedules. School Board policy states that course deletions must be approved by the board. I'm not sure where this decision is in this process and hope it's not too late for the board to strongly consider the potential negative ripple effect that could result from these changes. Franklin School Board Policy 6200 states that course additions or deletions at the high school and middle school shall be collaboratively developed by teachers, principals, and district staff. Course additions and deletions shall be reviewed and adopted by the Board of Education before they are initiated or dropped from the existing program of instruction. The rationale given for these drastic changes was that this was due to Forest Park test scores declining, especially in the area of literacy. Where is the data that states this was due to students having their current number of electives? Could other variables be at play? Fragmented instruction during the COVID years? How about the possible correlation that 1/3 of ELA teachers were new to Franklin Park Middle School in 2223? There is a learning curve for new staff with curriculum, expectations, and simply experience. What is being done to prevent so much turnover? What other factors may contribute to the decline? Where is the evidence that this shift will increase test scores? Leadership cited these changes as decisions of a committee made up of teachers and administrators called the Middle School Experience Team. However, members of the team did not create the schedule and never discussed the removal of an encore block nor its implications on students. What might those implications be? Adolescence is critical time to explore strengths, interests, hopes, and dreams. It's a time to rule potential careers and hobbies in or out. It's time to be exposed to new possibilities. Why would we want to minimize exploration for our middle school students? It's no secret that anxiety and depression levels in pre-teens and teens are on the rise. What impact will there be on students' mental health if high-interest courses that they find intriguing are decreased or eliminated? What about students who may not excel in the traditional classes but find fulfillment and hope for future endeavors in these classes? Students with disabilities often thrive in these types of courses. Decreasing access to these classes will negatively impact opportunities for the special education students in particular. One option being eliminated is the peer helpers in adaptive PE classes. Eliminating a practice that promotes the acceptance of all and fosters relationships with peers is short-sighted. Pre-teens and teens attending a full day of high- rigor classes without the encore-type classes to look forward to may lose the motivating factor that got them through the day. These exploratory classes tend to be very engaging and help develop well-rounded individuals. Franklin's is at a crossroad. Teachers and parents are expressing concerns. Staff members don't feel heard, nor do they feel they can speak freely. Parents are not feeling heard. Change for the sake of change is not the best strategy. Members of the board, administrators, please listen to all stakeholders before significant and questionable changes are made. Our children are counting on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Mickleg, please.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jackie Mickleg, 7809 Stone Brook Court, Franklin, Wisconsin. My husband and I have been homeowners in Franklin for 25 years. Our children received all of their education in the district. At the last board meeting, a proposal to build a recreation building in our community was discussed. If I would have heard about this a year ago, I may have questioned the necessity and the benefits. That was before our family had the opportunity to experience what a comprehensive, well-managed recreation center can truly provide a community. Let me give you some background. Our son Ben has Down Syndrome and started his schooling in the district at the age of three. He had a wonderful experience with stellar teachers, educational assistants, and therapists. Fast forward 18 years. Ben is now 21. He had to transition out of the school system, and we were terrified at what his future held. Services for adults with disabilities are often sparse and subpar. I toured four different day programs. After visiting the first three, I was extremely disheartened. None seemed like a good fit. My final visit provided hope. Do you know where I found it? At the West Alice West Milwaukee Recreation Center. This center operates out of a beautiful building that is bright and welcoming. More importantly, it serves as a community hub for a broad range of people across the lifespan with multiple needs. Ben now attends RAD, Recreation Adult Day Program. He spends six hours there daily, interacting socially, learning skills, having fun, all while being cared for in a way he deserves for his personal growth. Ben loves it. Here is a visual of what we encounter there each morning. We say hi and walk into the building with senior citizens who are arriving to attend a cheer yoga or zumba class. Ben is greeted by name by office staff. As we walk by the gym, we notice the pickleball court set up for games. Ben knows that they'll be taken down later, so he and his peers can play volleyball, shoot hoops, or play an organized game. This site was the only day program I toured that had a gym and a walking track, a crucial element for the well-being of a population that often doesn't have the opportunity to stay physically active. We then pass a spacious community room where special events are held. This connects to a kitchen where Ben and his friends make lunch. When we walk past the site-based preschool, staff and youngsters wave enthusiastically. Ben then enters his dedicated classroom, where friends and leaders welcome his arrival. As Ben leaves in the afternoon, he may encounter middle school students arriving to use the Maker Space. Teenagers hold the door open for us as they leave their open gym basketball games. The cross-section of intergenerational people we encounter is refreshing and positive for all. The integration of programming is phenomenal. In the summer, when the day program held a fundraiser car wash, the preschool staff brought out the three and four-year-olds and their little Tykes vehicles to be washed. The fire department stopped by in their engine and handed out coloring books and popsicles. Community members were there to show support for people they've come to know through their interactions at the center. At the last school board meeting, there were over a dozen families of students with disabilities here. Once these young people leave the school system, they need to forge a meaningful future. Will there be something available for them in our community? If Franklin is going to pursue this proposal, I strongly recommend you visit the West Alice West Milwaukee Rec Center. Talk to Shelley Strasser, the Director of Recreation and Community Services. Stretch the vision of what you think this building and programming could be to some and expect that it be even more for all. I have no doubt that with intention, Franklin can provide a comprehensive and impactful program. If this is the vision, I wholeheartedly support it. If it's limited in focus, I think our community can do without it. Thank you very much.
All right, those are all the people that signed up. Does anybody else care to community comment? All right, thank you, everyone. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
All right, motion's made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Mrs. Sapursky. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. School Board calendar, there's a regular Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, February 8th at the ECC at 6:00, and February 22nd at the ECC at 6:00 p.m., and a key communicators meeting Monday, February 13th, 2023, also at the ECC, but that is at 5:00. District Administrator update. Mrs. Bennon, please.
All right, good evening. First, I want to thank Principal Imperiali and Ms. Whitman and their students for being here tonight. It's always fun to hear their perspective, especially with flexible grouping and what that means to the student learning and the excitement and engagement. Couple other exciting things going on in the district lately. Last Thursday night, we held the 45th Annual District Spelling Bee. That was held at the middle school with all of our administrators taking part in administering it. And we had an eighth-grade student, Ashish, who was our winner after 14 rounds, and he'll compete near the end of the month, end of February, I think, at CISA I for the regional bee. But we also send out a congratulations to Benjamin, Rehan, Simon, Nithra, Eliza, and Ramona, who were also part of our finalists. Last Friday, the Franklin High School Jazz Ensemble shared a joyful and energetic performance at all five of our elementary schools. So, this tour is part of a plan, providing experiences that expose our younger students to what we have in our music program, what that can look like as they start moving into the middle school. Other exciting event that you may have seen on our social media last week is the Educator Pathway. We had a variety of educators from our high school that met after school to talk about what would it look like to create a pathway for high school students that are interested in exploring a career in education and did a lot of planning. Andy Thompson was a great lead in that. We've already had a reach out from Cardinal Stritch to look at, how can we partner with them to also be a FEED program into their college? And we're hoping to make even more connections and begin other discussions if we have other people that work with us in the district that want to explore education. How can we continue to grow and talk in that way? Tonight is an exciting night for Franklin Wrestling. They stand at 5-0, along with a neighbor district just to the east of us. So, they are having the battle for the SEC Conference Championship. They are battling to finish undefeated, obviously both being 5-0 teams. It would be the first time in 11 years that they are conference champions. So, we send our spirit to them tonight and hope they do well. And we have the Jazz Cabaret 2023 coming up next week, Saturday, February 4th, from 5:00 to 7:30. That takes place at the high school. There's advanced tickets for sale. It'll include our middle school jazz band, the Extra Crispy Brass Band, and the Franklin High School Jazz Ensemble as part of putting it on. So, there's some of the updates and excitement going on in Franklin.
Thank you. Reports, presentations, and other school board business, pre-AP English. Mr. Blessington, please.
All right, good evening, everybody. Like I mentioned a couple weeks ago, I said I'd be back for action item today on this. Like you noticed in your executive summary today, I just want to go through just a recap of where we left off from when we connected last time around some programming changes specific to English 9 and 10. In terms of our continuous improvement process, our curriculum developments, see this fitting in that stage one, that analysis phase. You know, and just some reminders, and I shared this slide last time. What are some, what are some critical components of leveling up? And you see those on your screen, really, you know, really having an expectation for leveling up for all students. We talked about that accessibility piece. We know that these courses are highly regarded, and this is a pathway in terms of like strength in our pathway for English at the high school. And as they, you know, as they, it doesn't close doors for students as they consider some AP options if they decide to after 10th grade. So, really excited about these changes and, you know, the energy that will come with these. Like we mentioned, these courses of the pre-AP framework is really highly regarded as, you know, the gold standard in terms of like frameworks. And these courses are directly back mapped from AP courses, and you can see some of those on the slide as well. So, it's really talking about those pathways and also some opportunities that we're really excited about. Like I mentioned last time, we really have a continued expectation for all students. So, you see one of our core values on there in terms of equity, but in terms of this concept of leveling up, this is not new, okay? So, this is not new work. This is like continued work around these, and we've seen some nice, some nice gains and some nice results of some of these changes. Like I mentioned last time, this is some data that we shared with you last time, specifically to science, which was requested. Really having, you know, clarity and focus on learning progressions and some of the, some of the pieces that have come out of pre-AP Chem and pre-AP Bio. We're really excited about some of those, and I highlighted those the last time that I was here. Just a reminder, in terms of our course sequence, this is where we look after, starting for the 25-26 school year. This would be the full sequence, knowing that this would be phased in over a couple of years, and really taking next year as a planning year. So, the first time that we would see the introduction of pre-AP I would be in the 2023-24, or 24-25, so really taking next year to really plan and do this right. So, really being intentional, providing some training, which I know one of the requests was around cost. And then, you know, I mentioned some training that was in your executive summary, and then some of the things that we've noticed with initial numbers in terms of increasing AP interest in these courses. So, in recap, these are the, these are the courses that would be on-boarded, the pre-AP I and II, and these would be the removal of those courses with completion of this coming at the start of the 25-26 school year. So, with that, I want to open it up to any questions, knowing that we talked about this in length, but I want to just, any other questions before we go from there?
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Blessington?
I don't have a question so much as a comment. At our last meeting, I was perhaps needling you hardest on these changes, and I appreciate you taking the time to meet with me and continue to answer my questions. I just want to share with you all that, you know, I've come around to this because we need to have curricula that's robust and well-structured that matches our standards. And so, whether he had come forward with a pre-AP curricula or another curricula, we need to move to a standard curriculum for the district, for these grade levels, to truly be teaching to the standards that we approve as a board. So, I also just want to say that I love that this course, the pre-AP course, does have built within it this ability to be adaptive to many students. We have to keep in mind that it's not going to be perfect for every student. So, this as we've met with some of our families here the last two meetings. We have to continue to be mindful of, you know, do work for our students who may need additional support. And then also, I hope that we can, as we continue to work on literacy throughout the district, students who may be showing that they have achieved the standards of some of these courses, an ability for them, as they currently have with the integrated math pathway, to progress more quickly if that's what best meets their learning needs for future. For now, I will be supporting these course changes.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
I don't have a question. I do just appreciate that you added this information about how the...
I do just appreciate that you added this information about how the pre-AP Bio and pre-AP Chem have increased the number of kids who are then moving on and taking the actual AP, you know, having that confidence and, you know, interest in, you know, trying that AP class at the next level. So I just appreciate that as a data point, so thank you.
Yeah, no problem. And I would just say the, the interest in science overall in Franklin is pretty amazing, aside just from our AP courses. I mean, just the amount of students that are taking their interest in all of our science courses and some even of electives is really, really impressive. So I think this just is just another, you know, layer in terms of garnering interest in all of our areas, so.
And there was a, a new student interest group that started this year, I believe, the Creative Writing Interest Group, so hopefully this can all, you know, writing is cool, too.
Says the author.
Just a quick follow-up. You mentioned the interest, and I know that in looking at the scope and sequence or the whole array of classes, how many of our students actually, do they just have four years of English, or do they take more in general? Because you have all these electives. What is the participation?
Like, what is the actual numbers of those kids? I don't have that in front of me, but I can certainly.
Do many students double up on English classes, I think is what she's getting at?
Right, I'm curious.
She really don't have Mr. Bull here. I don't, I don't know.
Maybe you can get back to me.
Yeah, and get you that data point. I don't want to speak in generalities.
Maybe you don't have the feel for it, but yes, I'm interested in, there's a lot to choose from, I'm wondering.
The only, the only comment which I kind of, you know, I have is that I think definitely pre-AP classes do help, you know, students taking even, you know, AP courses itself, you know? So I think definitely that's a great one move, but also as we kind of need to be cognizant of, we want to level up all the students, you know, especially with IAP, you know, disabilities or special needs. We need to be cognizant of, maybe in one year's time, see if this changes how they are affecting and how we can incorporate and level up everybody, you know, and if this, you know, is some special focus, you know, some, some kind of tweaking in the, in some way so that we can level up everyone, especially, you know, taking the consideration through the IEPs.
That's the idea.
Thank you. All right, any more, any further questions? All right, I'm looking for a motion.
I move to accept the course changes as presented in regards to pre-AP English 9 and 10.
Second.
All right, motion is made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Larson. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Open enrollment, 23-24. Ms. Lankour, please.
Good evening. So this is an item that become, that comes before the board on an annual basis in January. Essentially, I worked with Mrs. Cody and Mr. Cromie to kind of evaluate what our availability was to offer open enrollment seats for the next school year, taking into consideration our current class sizes, our staffing levels, as well as any financial pieces that might play a role in that. So for the 23-24 school year, we are offering up, or offering for the board to approve 81 seats with no seats available for students with disabilities.
And just a clarification that I came to realize, these are new open enrollment seats, not kids who are already open enrolled in the district that we plan to continue on.
Correct.
You know, once you're open enrolled, you're open enrolled for as long as you decide to be.
Just for the, for the record.
Is that, okay. This seems like, it seems like more seats than we've had in the past. Is that, is that the case? It seems like we've had between 60 and 70.
I would say more in the more recent past, but it's not a number that we haven't seen before or more of before. So historically, Franklin has offered more seats than this in the past. I think more recently, it's been towards the 60s, but when we evaluated the availability of seats within all of the schools, and as you can see, most of them are available at the elementary, we did realize that we had a little bit more flexibility just with some smaller class sizes that have come through and kind of year-over-year rolled over.
Is this, is this showing a trend maybe in, in enrollment, starting to go down a little bit in the, in the lower grades?
I think I would say the opposite. As you recall, we added a couple of teachers at the elementary level in certain grades, right? So that expanded some room. So one of the, the key components that we're working with, with open enrollment is we don't want to add staff, but if we have available seats, let's maximize the staff we have, so to speak. So we don't want to, again, we're not trying to increase staff, but if we have open chairs, let's look to see if we can bring in some people to fill those open chairs.
Linda, please.
Yes, I'm wondering, though, I see that most of the open seats are in the elementary grades, and, and as we, we heard last year that there is development in Franklin going on, and we would expect that enrollment, residential enrollment would go up. So I'm wondering if maybe this is, this is a time when we would pull back in anticipation of that growth and give us a few more years before we look at any new construction. Would that be a method that we could use to give us a buffer there?
So we have calculated some of that growth already in the numbers that were used to generate what seats we would have available. So we know that that growth is going to take periods of time, right? We're not getting 500 kids tomorrow. The growth isn't there. So we looked at the calculations and how they were really the class cohorts and how they've carried through, through the years, and we've added a quantifier on that based on the changes we're seeing over the last several years, based on growth inside of Franklin for residents, and carried that forward, including adding to that. So if the quantifier was a grade increase by 5% every year, we went to like six or seven, and what does that number produce? So we have some additional people coming in, other than the typical growth that we seem to have, uh, seem to have happening here, and then use that to then calculate available seats.
Please, Alan.
And as you and I discussed, this, you made the comment that we use, we tend to fill about 65% of the seats that we offer. So it's not like when we've got 81 here, we close out other people because we're just not going to fill 81 seats.
Angie, please.
I don't know if any of you looked back at the historical data that Ms. Lankour posted for us in, in our library, but it's actually been relatively stable in terms of our balance of open enrollment in, open enrollment out. Over really the last 15 to 20 years, we've managed to maintain a pretty level ship. So I, I, it doesn't seem to me that this is a huge change.
No, it's not. I mean, based on previous data, it's not also that it's, I mean, we, we do have far more kids coming in than we have going out.
Far more.
But it is a, it is an upward trend. I wouldn't say it's been stable. We added at least 100 kids in the last five years.
If you look at the actual number of open enroll, did you look at that document?
Yes, I did, and I.
You mean enrollment's gone up 100? Is that what you're saying?
Enrollment or open enrollment?
Open enrollment.
Well, I think we've, we've also got larger, we've got a larger building in the middle school and the, and the high school than we can.
So, Andy, if I could just understand, then you're saying that you have factored in then growths of 6% then of residential into your calculation?
I use the, the percentage as an example, because I can't remember, but it differs by grade level or cohort or any particular year, but we took whatever the percentages were, added a quantifier to that to calculate in not only typical residential growth, but increased residential growth, knowing that we have subdivisions coming in. So I can't remember the percentages on a grade level year, but we've calculated that out and again added a quantifier to help with increased enrollment as well.
Maxu, did you have a question?
We don't have any open enrollment seats for the high school, and I thought, I know that a lot of the parents, you know, look at the high school because it matters with the GPA and colleges and where you graduated from. You don't have any openings, and if there are any neighboring district students who want to come to Franklin because it's such a solid district, is there any possibility to do anything for that?
From the high school perspective, one thing to take into consideration is that we all have, already have students that are currently enrolled in Franklin that are on waiting lists to apply and go and be in different classes and have preferences. So it's just something to keep in mind with bringing in more students. What do those wait lists look like for those courses? And how do they grow when you're adding more students into that building? So that's one big factor that we take into consideration.
Well, and there are, how many, how many open enrollment students are there at the high school? There's about 400 district-wide. Is that correct? Yeah, we're probably at 430 district-wide. You probably can divide that fairly evenly by 13 and put 33 to 34. I think to what Ms. Lankour said, the key components, we're not trying to add staff, and we're already at those wait lists in a lot of areas at the high school. So we either increase those wait lists or we're plugging those students into areas that they may or may not want to take.
Yeah.
But then what does that cascading effect look like even for places where we might have a couple of seats? If we're adding more kids in, we're looking at class sizes that hit in the 35 range, or we're saying we're going to add staff in order to accommodate that. So trying, again, let's maximize what we have. Let's not increase it to just increase it, but maximize what we have.
Does anybody have further questions?
Yeah.
I'm looking for, Linda, please.
Well, I did notice, though, Andy, that in the budget, which is in the future, another agenda item, that you had assumed that we were reducing open enrollment by 30 in that budget scenario. Can you explain how that scenario fits with this proposal here?
Yep, unrelated to this proposal whatsoever, so we'll talk about it when we talk budgeting, but we're in January, so I'm a very conservative person. So I conservatively take a look at revenues, and I take a higher look at expenses, and hopefully, as we go through the course of the year, we're this far apart now, we start to merge those when things become a little bit more solidified. So that's a very, I believe, low, but I'd rather shoot low and find out we can do more rather than shoot high and find out we're going to have to take something away because we're just not going to make it there. So these two things are meant to be unrelated. They are not the same whatsoever.
So what you're saying is, is we're proving, we're proving up to 81 seats, and you're budgeting on, on 30?
If we're at 430 this year, I'm like, well, let's just say we're at 400 for next year, and we're going to start with that projection.
Thank you.
As we get open enrollment applications, so let's assume you approve this 81 tonight, right? Applications start in sometime in February, they end sometime around the middle of April. We take a look at all those. About the end of May, we start slotting them into classrooms, so now we're pulling, we're rolling classes forward. We're taking a look at who's here, and we're saying, you know what? We have three at Ben Franklin and two at Countrydale and one at Southwood Glen, and we start slotting them in. Then we offer those seats to parents. Parents either say, yes, we want them, or no, we can't. So a couple of things we look to do. Do we have the grade level that they want? Obviously, if they have a sibling, can we fit that in, and do we have the building they want? All of those work to our advantage for a parent to take them. But if a parent is really set on going to Ben Franklin, and we can only offer Countrydale, they may or may not take that offer. So all of that is considered inside of the 81. So when Alan mentioned 65%, that's a number that I got from Mr. Milzer in checking some historical pieces, but all of that gets factored into why typically all the seats you offer typically don't all get taken, because we can't meet the exact things that some parents are looking for. And some are just looking to move into Franklin, and that's great, and they'll take anything that we offer, which, awesome, but some are very particular. You know, they live close to their house. I'm a Muskego resident, Countrydale's right there. That's why I want Countrydale. I can't drive across the town and take Southwood Glen because I just don't have the time.
I just, I just wondering, you know, given that we are in a growth spurt now, at what point would we, would we pull back on this from a policy standpoint? At what point would we look to pull back on open seats?
So we're working with Madison Applied Population Lab, who's taking a look at holistic growth over the next 10 years in our community. So they take a look at birth rates, residential growth that we have, so we have a lot of that, right? So they're going to be able to provide us several different models of what it's going to look like over the course of the next 10 years. So we're going to move towards, start applying that to the concepts of how many open enrollment seats are we have, based on what projected growth is. Because we're looking at, we look at past trends. I don't have housing data growth, and I'm not an actuary either to be able to take that and manipulate that into it. I don't have birth rates, and I can ask about those, but again, I'm not an actuary, and how does that change over a period of time? So we provide it to the experts, so that's their job, and they'll give us those, what does it look like over the next 10 years, again, in several different models, and we'll take that as administrative staff, and we'll start incorporating that into the sausage grinder, which will help us get a little bit more granular as we move forward on those particular numbers. Ultimately, one of the, the key components of approving seats tonight is if we don't approve seats, it is wide open. So every student that applies, we offer a seat to, whether they're regular ed, special ed, whether they're 4K through high school. So that's a key component, and that needs to be done statutorily by January 31st.
Well, we better do it.
Oh, we could do less seats. We have that option. The board could, right?
We could. I'm, I'm, I would rather trust that the due diligence and the formulas were applied by the people whose job it is to look at these things than me making up a number here based on what feels right to me. So I'm ready to approve that.
I'm looking for a motion to approve 81 open enrollment seats for the 23-24 school year with additional seats to be added if space becomes available.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Dr. Beer. Any further discussion?
I guess in next year, we see this report, it would be helpful to have more future forward-looking information. We just have a point in time right now, and you said you were looking at that. Maybe you can share that in the future.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Communications update. Mr. Kafka, please.
It worked.
Says the communication guy.
Well, good evening. Good to see you all again and give a communications update, as I typically do annually. For a little while there, we were revising the communications plan, so I was going to see you more regularly. Tonight is just a regular annual communications update. So for the parts that plan to go through, part one of this will just be a review of the current communications, 21 through 24, plan and the status of some of those tactics. And then part two, we recently did a communication survey, as you're aware, at the end of December into January, and so I have those survey results to share with you and share some takeaways from, and how that will impact our actions going forward. And then we'll talk about what's next, and then a time at the end for some Q and A. So as you're familiar with, this one pager, this was part of your board packet from last Friday. This is the executive brief of our current 21 through 24, three-year communications plan, and it's broken into these three areas. The FPS story, the internal stakeholders, and how we best communicate with our internal stakeholders, and then how we best engage with our external stakeholders. And so the different strategies and tactics there that you're familiar with, so I'm going to, I'm going to kind of move past those quickly as we'll hit them again later. Typically, I give you a status update. I've kind of condensed things down a little bit since we're well on our way into this plan and almost getting ready to write the next plan. So as we go through this next part, I'll share some of the ongoing tactics, those things that we've either met or are currently part of our practice. I'll share those that are in development stages where we're actively working on it, and it's hopefully getting close to being part of our practices, and then actually none of them are in the red right now, and other in the gathering or the ideas or research phase, so that's, that's good to see. So combining some of the various tactics together that you can see, again, I kind of took these from all three areas and put them together on this one slide. These are ones that I've already gone over with you at past updates to share, and so things like working to make sure that our mission, vision, and values are tied into our writing pieces that we put out. Obviously, having a new superintendent, she's been great about including our mission, vision, and values in the writing that we put out to the community and the different ways we put out communications to the community. We've shared about branding assets in the past, and so there's a graphic up there, you notice a little asterisk by Robin Wood. We're currently working, Robin Wood is working through kind of rebranding what their mascot is going to be. They did a vote recently. I won't spoil it until you can see the actual graphic as we get that put together, but they'll be updating their mascot as we go into next year, so that's kind of exciting for them.
Is it going to be a cat?
It will be a cat, yes.
Oh, you put it on a bag, in heaven.
Although I was talking, it's not the wolves, but I was talking to somebody the other day. He's like, oh, did we miss an opportunity with wolves? Because you've got some, you've got some alliteration there, but trying to say Robin Wood Wolves really fast, I don't know if that would roll off the tongue the right way, so I'm kind of glad we didn't go that route. But they'll, they did a vote, kids were really excited about it, they had some contests, we got some designs from one graphic designer who actually has done designs for us before for the Bobcat and prior for the Franklin Saber when he was here in high school. So he's currently working on a update, based on one of our art teacher's drawings of what the new Robin Wood logo of what the new Robin Wood logo is going to be. So that all to say, we've been very cognizant about making sure that we're putting our branding assets together and working those into a communication guide, which I've been working with leadership and office staff, and they're consistent in the way that we're using those logos. The, the area two ones there have to do with our employee hub that I shared with you last year. We kind of created an internal Intranet place to store resources. That's up and running. It's part of our regular practices. Increased consistency in our department and district messages through the Franklin Find Staff Newsletter. We've been doing that now for a few years, again, part of our regular practice. Streamlining our one-way communication through building-level district communications out to families, part of our regular practice. And then three A two was implement and update a parent survey, which we just did, and I'll share those results with you in a few minutes. So those are the ones that all fall under ongoing. Some of the ones that are currently in development. So I started working last year, and I shared with you, I'm working just kind of on a communications guide. When we have regular messaging that we need to pull from, I've been stockpiling those and storing those and creating a guide for that. Also ties in our branding logos and our assets. I have access to that right now, so when we have a situation occur, an emergency at a building, we've got language ready to go. Fortunately, when we had the incident at Forest Park earlier this year, some of that was part of this guide. So we have that at the ready, and we can just quickly fine-tune it and edit it. But we have text messages in there, we have phone calls, we have email messages ready to go, and we can update them so that they're, they pertain to the situation we're dealing with. The next step in that is, that guide is more for us at the, probably the district level when we're doing communications, but pieces of a guide would be available to our staff. So when we talk about using our logos and using our color schemes, we want to make sure that our staff is consistent with doing that. So we would put something like that next step into the employee hub so that they have access to that. As I mentioned earlier, we're currently using that with the office staff and the administrators. But my hope is, as we go into next school year, to have that be an active part of the employee hub. We have it a little bit right now. When new staff come to us and they want to build something as simple as their email signature, we have a guide to follow and a look to follow. So things like that, that we're just kind of shoring up that we never really had in the past. These other areas are currently in the developing. So the first one is reviewing the efficiency of our employee engagement survey. So currently, under H R, under Ms. Lankour's watch, we're transitioning to a new employee engagement survey in the future. So she's currently actively working on pulling those questions together and figuring out what that's going to look like so that we can set benchmarks and gather new data. And so we'll also be including probably some communication questions around that too with how we communicate with staff. We haven't, we haven't had the ability yet to survey staff. So we're doing that through some upcoming pulse surveys, as well as this employee engagement survey that we're actively building. The next area, so it says explore and create opportunities for increased frequency around staff recognition at the district level, at the supervisor administrator-to-subordinate level, at the peer-to-peer level. So some of the things that we've been doing this year and we've implemented this year, there's some pictures up there, you've probably seen these gold postcards. We've been having these note cards used by supervisors to craft a quick note to a staff member just as a pick-me-up, as a, hey, something I noticed that you're doing well. So our administrators all were given those cards this year, and they're actively using those. We started monthly, there's a picture there of our bus drivers, and one of the people in the room was a recipient of the bontinis that we gave out to our bus drivers as part of our monthly recognition of all the hard work that our bus drivers do. Some of our buildings are using a shout-out form where the principal will put out a Google form, simple Google form, and say, hey, if you have something to shout out to about another staff member, fill it out. And then they're either including it in an email to all staff on Fridays or at Forest Park. I know they're including it as part of their announcements to kind of spotlight teachers and what they're doing and staff, what they're doing in the building. Through our rounding conversations that our administrators do, they're also getting names from people when they do a one-on-one rounding talk with a staff member. Part of that process at the end is asking, is there anybody that you want to recognize for your work? And so then they're making sure, the administrator is making sure to give that feedback to that person. So we're just really trying to build up all of these great ways to recognize our staff through those types of little things. And those are some examples of where those are currently being developed. The last one there at the bottom, create ways to showcase staff and staff work in the district. Through our staff newsletter this year, you've probably seen this. We have our new people that are helping to turn the gears section, where we're spotlighting at least two staff members, sometimes more. And so there's a little snapshot of it there. So just as a way to recognize some staff that, for something they did, some work that they did to help us turn the gears of what we're doing. And then we're sharing more about staff work on our social media channel. So if we find a great story to put out there, we're trying to put that out there as well. And then these last three here, the first one, just reviewing, evaluating, and updating the district websites to better organize our resources. So currently, we're kind of auditing those webpages. I finally got to it here this year. I was hoping to do it over the summer, and it didn't happen. But we're currently working to audit those pages and update the images throughout. We took some more stock photos this fall in our schools. And so I have kind of a plethora of stock photos to pull from, so I'm going through and updating those photos. So that's currently in, excuse me, in development. The second one has to do with our social media. So continue to build and evaluate our social media to foster pride. So we have regular social media use. Growth and engagement of all of our numbers is currently going up. I've got some statistics to show you here on the next slide. And then the last one is one I'm working on this spring. Evaluate and explore creating an annual school district publication that showcases Franklin Public Schools. This is something we've talked about the last few times I met with you. So I've got some costs that I've currently gathered from a few companies about what that cost to actually mail that out as a four-page or an eight-page mailer. And so I'm working with the designer on what that could look like and pulling in stories around better place to learn, better place to work, part of a better community, just to showcase all of the great things that are going on in education and in our schools. Here's some stats. I know you guys like seeing this. So from September first through just this past Monday, when we take a look at our top Facebook posts that have gathered the most reach, and you can see the definition of reach there is the number of people that have seen that story at least once, the number of Facebook accounts that have at least seen it, scrolled past it. Number one was the home build story that was, so we have our construction home build that's now, I think, we're in our fourth or fifth annual year of doing that. So W I S N twelve featured us as a story. So that one had the most high reach and the highest number of likes and reactions, meaning like the little likes or the hearts or the comments or whatnot. Number two was the two former alumni that had gone to Southwood Glen and got married, and they came back and got, they wanted some pictures at Southwood Glen. So that one was number two. Number three was when Officer Pep Rocky retired. Lots of engagement around that post. And then number four was just from a week or two ago when we had local churches come together and donate money to help families in need with, with lunch debt for the district. So the fact that that one got so much engagement right away, and it's only a few weeks later, and these other ones are from further back, I mean, that's how powerful that story was from just a few weeks ago. On Instagram, which is fast-growing in terms of numbers of followers and such. Number one was just, and I should say, on Instagram, when I go into the posts and I can see who's liking things, more of our students follow us on Instagram. Our students really aren't on Facebook. Facebook is probably more parents. So these numbers kind of reflect probably more of our high school audience. But number one was homecoming photo dump, when I just took from the parade and all the pictures, I dumped a bunch of photos in there. So that was number one. Number two was the F H S blood drive. Number three, this guy again, Officer Pep Rocky retiring. So that, that was also number three for this. And then number four, the two alumni getting married. And those were the top four, four stories from Instagram. I didn't bother to share Twitter because we don't get a lot of traction on Twitter. We get some, we don't get a lot of engagement, I should say, on Twitter. And you'll see that reflected when we talk about the comp survey here in the next part. Some honorable mentions for external stakeholder feedback. So while not part directly of the plan, different board efforts that you guys have been doing over this past year to gather feedback have, have helped with that. So the pre-board quarterly meetings that you're doing, I know they started out, I think it was every meeting you were doing for a little while. We have two board members on hand to talk with anybody that wants to come for an informal chat. Now quarterly, those help with engaging external stakeholders. And then I think a little bit of that morphed into the key communicators meetings. So just getting a panel of people from the community together three times a year to look at our coherence plan and how they can help move that forward. Those are just other examples of external feedback that were never envisioned as part of the communication plan, but I definitely think those, those directly tie. So part two here, as you know, we did the communication survey and, and received feedback. So we had six hundred and forty-one responses, which honestly, I was worried we were going to, if we were going to hit like three hundred, four hundred, five hundred. So that's, that's good. When we take a look at some of the ways and the, or the focus of the survey, rather, the, the purpose of the survey was to gauge impact of our communication efforts and then also tie that back to when we talk about one-way communication, when we put things out through School Messenger, when we put things out through our district newsletters. Two-way communication, where we're putting something out like a survey and asking for feedback, or if we're doing a focus group, or through our key communicators, I would consider that two-way as well. And then our passive communication efforts, where we have information available for people to find, like our website or just information about us. So those are the three areas that we really wanted to get some feedback on. Before sharing that with you, this was a question, and it's a little hard to see, so I'll point out the highlights. The first question was, what type of device do you access communications on? Far and above that middle bar is on smartphones. So that's, that's important for us to know because when we're designing a lot of things that we push out, we want to make sure that it's accessible on the smartphone-shaped device. So we use the Smore tool for our newsletters, which form fits to phones perfectly. It takes things that when we design it on screen may look like a paragraph with a picture next to it, and it streamlines it into a column on a phone. So using tools like that, School Messenger does the same thing. When we push out our email blasts or our text messages, it form fits to the phone. So that, that's helpful for us to know that, and that we've been, I guess, actively working towards smartphone use anyway. The second question is, from which source do you receive the most school information? So the weekly school bulletins came in number one. School Messenger blast, whether it's phone calls, emails, or texts, was number two. And then number three was the bi-weekly district newsletter. So that just reinforces the way we are pushing out communications. That's where people are getting most of their information. Other notable mentions on there that you'll see are things like from the websites, directly from teachers and staff, from a classroom website, from word of mouth. But again, those were, were ranked significantly lower.
Is Facebook on there?
Social media was...
It's like second to last.
Thank you. Yeah, second to...
Or third to last.
Yeah, social media, district social media. So again, this is where, where the source that they receive from the most. So I would, I would think people see it on social media. We never treat social media as our direct way to communicate. That would, that's not going to hit everybody. One-way communication feedback, so these three questions asked about frequency. Selfishly, I was trying to look at, when we're putting out our newsletters, do we need to be putting them out weekly, bi-weekly? I was curious what we get back. This reinforced exactly what we're doing. The first question was the frequency of receiving the district newsletter bi-weekly, meaning every two weeks, that's the tall bar. So four hundred-ish, people thought that that was important and keep doing that, and then it drops off. Number two was the frequency of receiving the school newsletters weekly, and people liked that. So that was the tall bar there as well. So I was curious to see if people felt like maybe we were inundating them with too much newsletters and if, if we needed to scale that back at all. But this, based on this, I think we would stay status quo. The last question, the pie chart, is just how would you rate our one-way communication efforts? So I'm looking for blue and green there. Blue is, is high, and then four is, is right behind that. Blue is five, green is four. And so that's well over seventy-five percent are in the positive of a five-point scale. Two-way communication feedback, so this one, this question was asking, what social media platforms do you personally use? And for the first question on the left, ask, pick up to three. So the top three there were Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube, which surprised me. And then LinkedIn was four, none was five, Twitter was six. So you can just see how they trail off there. I was curious to see from our parent, again, this is our parent audience, if anything like Snapchat or TikTok or anything like that was filtering more towards the top. And based on the top three that you had to pick, those, those were, were not filtering up there. The second question was, from the three you picked, which one do you use the most often? And Facebook is the tallest bar, followed by Instagram. Again, like I said, Instagram is growing for us, maybe not in parent use according to this survey, but we definitely, we are getting more likes sometimes on Instagram now than we are on Facebook. Again, probably from our, our student population or youth population. But this was interesting to me, just to kind of reinforce that. And then this question, same as before, how would you rate our two-way communication efforts? I'm looking for blue and green. And so above fifty percent there for, for that, even the yellow is still in the three range, so still in the positive if you had to split it right down the middle. So in terms of rating our F P S two-way communication efforts, that's, that's a positive. This passive communication, again, where our information is stored and they know how to find it. First question was, how often do you access the district website? The tall bar is just occasionally. Never was over on the right, and weekly was on the left of that bar. So occasionally is, is kind of what I thought would, would come back. And then how often do you access your child's actual school website? Meaning like going to Ben Franklin, going to Pleasant View, going to Franklin High School. And so that one was also occasionally. And then again, rating those efforts of, of how we put information out there for people to find, blue and green. So that's again above half, and yellow still is kind of in the midst there, is positive in the, in the middle. When visiting district websites, what information are you typically seeking? So before even doing this survey, I knew it was going to come back this way. Calendars and lunch menus. That is typically what people are looking for. And that's calendars was number one, lunch menus was number two. Third one was student information systems, so trying to go to our power school or find out information about kids' assignments and grades. District and school news was number four. Athletics information or a team schedule was number five. Making payments was number six. And then they kind of just continue to creep down from there. So we have calendars prominently on our website. We have our, our lunch menus are, are linked up on our school's main pages as well. There are big buttons right in the middle. If they go to Ben Franklin, there's a big button right there for lunch menu. So those are things that we just want to make sure to keep prominent because that's what people are looking for. How do you stay current with, sorry, this one might hurt some egos. But how do you stay current on Board of Education meetings and district initiatives? The top ranked is, I don't stay current on Board of Education meetings or district initiatives.
Wow.
So however, I would, I would argue that's probably pretty typical. But the interesting thing was, and this is, this is a, this is a good thing for us. So we do those board briefs where we take some quick notes from the meeting, and we put them out as a graphic, and we typically do them in social media. We do them on newsletter. I did miss this last time, so I would not get on track with that. But that is the number two way, so seeing the board briefs. So I think those little snippets that we put out as little teasers, I think that helps to just inform people what's being worked on. The district website or the district or school website is number three. Word of mouth is number four, so that's important as well, just to know that when people do talk in the community, that, that, that word travels. So I think that would help us with any initiatives that we do in the future. Overall, how would you rate just communication in general from Franklin Public Schools? Again, blue and green, and looking at that well over seventy-five percent in the, the kind of high to, to middle-high category. So that, that just reinforces what we're doing and hopefully staying on track with that. So my top three takeaways, number one was that our school bulletins and our district newsletters, which are ranked number one and number three, are the best way for us to reach families. Still, they know to go to that. It's a regular thing they receive. I know, as even with my kids in Muskego, I'm, if I'm trying to find something, I'm going to my email and searching for it and trying to find, you know, whatever that last newsletter was. Aside from our School Messenger pushes, when we have to push information out, that was number two. That all makes sense in terms of getting information to people. Number two, we need to make sure that our content is formatted for smartphone devices as the overwhelming majority are accessing them now on smartphones. So that's just something as we design to keep in mind. And then number three, when it comes to social media, our parents are mostly on Facebook, according to this survey, but those numbers are growing on Instagram. So just kind of planning for those and putting that, using that to our advantage. In terms of what's next for what we're working on, as I mentioned, working on the mailer piece here for the spring, evaluating and updating that website where needed. Hope to do that as a spring project as well. And then as we get into later in twenty-twenty-three, I'll start building the next strategies and tactics for the twenty-four through twenty-seven plan, communications plan. But that will come kind of either in alignment or just after we do whatever is the next version or vision of the coherence plan, because we want to make sure we tie back to that like we did with, with this one. So that is my update for you. Any questions?
Andy, please.
First of all, district communications, night and day, from whenever you started this job. When did you start it, five years ago?
This is my fifth year.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, I don't want you to feel too good about yourself after all that blue and green, but I'm guessing. Out of curiosity, you added that ability for non-parents and family members to subscribe to our district newsletter. I'm just curious if any community members have taken advantage of that or if you couldn't even tell.
That's a great question. So I can tell you, I just added a name to that list either today or yesterday. I don't remember the total number on the list. I want to say it's maybe around fifty.
All right, it's better than none.
Yeah, and that includes people like, we work with a designer, and she's like, oh, I'd love to get copies of your newsletters. And so she gets that. So, so yeah, it could be people that just want to receive copies. It could be, I'm hopeful that most of them are Franklin and want to receive that information.
Perhaps when you are designing the spring mailer that'll go to everybody, you could just include a little thing about this.[1697.61]
Good idea. Yeah, that is a great idea. I will do that.
And I would also just encourage you all, um, on Instagram, in addition to following the district, like every student club and sport has an Instagram page. And I really learn a lot about what's going on in the district by following those.
Yeah, those give me a lot of content and stories to follow up on too, so that's good.
Do it for the gram.
You just love saying that.
I do. Makes me feel hip.
Linda, please.
Yeah, I know you're feeling good about the, how parents are using the website, but I'm not a parent. I'm a community member and I'm still very disappointed in, in the website.
Sure.
Glad to hear you're working on it. I mean, you go to the website and you're still seeing pictures of our new teachers and the first day of school and graduation.
Sure.
So right away I'm thinking there's nothing new here. So it's not a good first impression. So I'm just saying, I said it before and.
Yep.
So.
Okay, yep.
Parents know where to go, right? But I'm not going for the lunch menu.
Sure, sure.
And I do receive the, uh, the, um, the school newsletters and that because, and that is excellent information.
Yeah, good.
I want to balance that with, um, as a community member, it's not, not good. But parents, I could see are very happy.
Good, thank you. Yep, I will work on those photos. Anything else?
I want to applaud you Chad for doing an amazing job. You know, uh, it's a tough job, you know, especially communication is not easy. I personally am very proud of you.
Thank you.
You do a good, you do a good job and you'd really put a lot of effort in that and we can see the results of that. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Yeah, I've always enjoyed like making sure things could be understood. And so there's a lot of things swirling in the school district and a lot of things flying at us. But making sure people can understand where we're coming from and why, and that students are at the center of everything we do. Like I really, I really take a lot of pride in that, so thank you.
We've got a good story to tell and you, and you tell it well. I will say that I think communication has gotten, has even stepped up this year. And I think our finest hour was, was when, um, in a very tough situation. And, uh, with the middle school and, and it was handled, it was handled so well and, and was organized, um, communication wise. Let's hope it's, let's hope it's the one and only time, but it was, it was handled well. And that's, that makes, that makes, um, that makes parents feel.
Yeah.
Feel better.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, this gram's been a lo- round for a long time. I said this gram has been around for a long time.
Clever, clever. But you are the best that we've ever had, that I've ever seen here, so.
Thank you.
I really appreciate your work.
We're gonna stop before he's.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, I don't, he won't be able to get out of the door. So we'll, we'll stop.
Chad's only gonna, Chad's only gonna give us twenty more minutes to talk about this.
I want to know what you're gonna do to make the board more popular.
Put nothing on the line.
This is definitely as quick as you've ever done it.
Not that Mike was counting the one apparently.
All right, twenty-three, twenty-four preliminary budget, uh, budget assumptions. Mr. Kromy, please.
Maybe it'll pop up. I guess this mole will take care of that. So what I am talking about tonight is very preliminary projections of Fund Ten and Fund Twenty-seven. So, um, like if I was to give you a visual of this, think of it as some, uh, two-by-fours going down your driveway and we're going to put some really moist and super wet concrete into that particular space. And it is very pliable and we can move it wherever we want. That's the visual for you, right? It's, nothing is set in stone. It is so malleable at this point. In any case, a couple of things, just for your note, um, when I look at revenues, I'm considering resident population remaining flat. So we know that there's going to be some growth in there, but I don't even have Second Friday count done. Or we don't have it done yet for me to reference what is the growth from Second Friday or from Third Friday to Second Friday. So at this point, this is built off that just remaining flat. So about forty-five hundred FTEs. We've already mentioned the open enrollment, so we know we have thirty-six seniors leaving, so we're chopping those off. We know we're going to add some people back, but let's assume it's very sparse and we lose thirty-six and we only add six to ten of those back. So that's kind of where that is built off of. Revenue limit and categorical aid increase and the special education reimbursement increase. So as you know, we're in the biennium right now. This is probably the most talked about thing as far as, um, business managers. Like we marinate on these particular topics and we talk about them ad nauseam. So, um, I, I know there is a proposal, they may have mentioned it at the state, uh, education convention. They're looking at about fifteen hundred, ten dollars per student over the course of the biennium. So split that up by two or front load it or put it all in the back. But they're looking for about fifteen hundred, ten dollars. In any case, this two hundred plus one hundred fifty in categorical aid, plus the increase from thirty to forty-five percent, that's roughly about six hundred fifty dollars per student. If we were to put that out over two years, we're at about thirteen hundred. So that's short of what's being asked, um, from DPI. But again, this, we have no idea what's going to come, come through. So, um, I'm shooting in the dark on this one, truthfully, um, just based on what's being talked about. But I'm not really sure where we're going to go with that. From an expense standpoint, um, salary increase of four percent for all groups. So taking a look at, um, uh, Miss Bennet and all the way down to our last employee. So four percent, um, is just a holistic number. So again, right now, everything is big bucket idea. So we plug in four percent, it's going to kick out this number and that's the number we're applying. Health premium increase of, uh, ten percent, dental at two, um, open enrollment out reduction of five FTEs. So that number seems to be trending down, so, um, I trended that down as well. Voucher program increase of twenty percent. I add that in here because that's really just a tax, um, tax levy impact. The voucher program is essentially laundering money. We get money and we pay out the exact same amount we get. We're just the ca- uh, the venue to help pay that out to voucher schools. Some smaller assumptions, what percentage of student fees are we going to get? What is our interest revenue? Um, we know we're going to have new staff, so where are we going to hire them at? What are the benefits they're going to take? And so again, like when I think about, um, benefits for new hires, I started everybody getting family health and family dental that qualifies for insurance. And that's the worst we can be. That's the worst position we can be in. We assume that that's going to go down. Utilities certainly, department budget allocations are all big buckets right now. So I think about, um, teaching and learning and student services, that's just a big bucket. There is no line item associated with it. It's just where do we think we're going to start with providing dollars for them? When I put those all in, I get this particular document. So again, this is a big bucket document. And we're really again talking about Fund Ten and Fund Twenty-seven. That's our normal school day operation, seven-thirty to three-fifty or whatever it happens to be depending on the school, right? Fund fifty is going to run itself. It's a very productive fund. It's going to take care of doing the things we need to do for food service. Fund eighty, my mind tells me at this point, we're going to keep our levy flat. Uh, Mr. Anderson is doing a great job with that. So like, I'm not really worried about those at this particular point in time. I'm really worried, how are we going to teach our kids every day? Well, how are we going to do that? On the left-hand side, we have revenues here. And I do highlight property tax and I do highlight general aid, um, because those relate directly to the revenue limit. So that two hundred dollars that I added to the revenue limit, that's where these numbers are, or that's where that two hundred is going to factor in. The numbers associated, just for your reference, two-eleven means nothing to you. Two-hundred-eighty means nothing to you. To us, it tells us exactly what that means when we look in Skyward. So if I look up revenue two-hundred-eleven, that tells me that's our property tax levy and two-hundred-eighty is interest. I just put it in there for my reference. So that's not like nothing of concern to you. We carry that all the way down. We take a look at such things as our federal revenues. So those are our grants. The numbers that you see there are outside of, I'm sorry, I'll talk about the expenses. Those are our, what I estimate are allocations to be. Some of them are grouped, so you can see seven-thirty is Title Two, Three and Four. All of those fit under that same revenue code, so I just group those together. Again, this is my preliminary for my mind and, and how I think about those. Title One has its own account code, so I do put that one out there separately. And it's also much larger. It looks about two and a half times the size of those others combined. And then we have some miscellaneous things. Those are going to be things like E-Rate. So E-Rate's a federal reimbursement program for technology. So if we have to do upgraded, uh, hardware for like the servers, um, or wireless access, the federal government gives us a fifty percent reimbursement on that, up to a certain amount of dollars. Um, if we do really well on our workers' comp insurance, so for those of you that know anything about workers' comp, um, you're given a mod every year. So you have an expectation that's called one-point-oh. If you beat that expectation, you get a certain reimbursement back. So those are the types of things that fit into that miscellaneous revenue. And we estimate all of those, right? So, um, total fund revenue is sixty-two million, six-eighty in our preliminary projection. On the right-hand side, that big green area, that is all salaries and benefits for pretty much everything that we do related in, on this top part to Fund Ten. So I think I mentioned at our very first key communicators, I went through and I took a look at every employee we have. What is their, what is their salary and or hourly wage? What are the benefits they get? That all sits on a gigantic spreadsheet. Um, every time things come through HR, that spreadsheet gets updated. So, um, if a new salary is provided, I plug in the new salary. If someone resigns or retires, I plug in what do we estimate hiring that person in? The other key piece is it also holds all the positions we currently can't fill. So we have a fair number of instructional aides or educational assistants, both in Fund Ten and Fund Twenty-seven that flow in and out. We're holding all of those open. So that, like if a spot's not filled, we don't cross it off and take it out. It's held there. Whether we can fill it next year, whether we actually decide to do something different with it, we'll adjust it at that time. But at this point, it's all held there. So that's where that four percent across all groups is going to fit. That's where ten percent healthcare is going to fit and two percent dental, um, is going to fit in that particular bucket as well.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
What's, is support staff? Who is that?
So support staff in this particular instance, um, is going to be things like EAs.
But you have EAs in separate.
Oh, sorry. What do I have in support staff?
All the support groups and I don't know.
Yeah, um, so this is going to be, um, well, here, I'll look it up and I'll, I'll give you specific, I won't tell you who it falls into, but, um, specific positions. So all of the people that work at the, uh, ECC, other than our administrative staff is going to fall into that support staff. Oh, I should pull that off of there. Yeah, sorry, I'm hooked up, so I can't necessarily look at that. So just give me a moment here. We have our interventionists fall into that and our instructional coaches will fall into that. I already mentioned our, our office staff.
Not secretary, secretary.
Secretaries have their own category. Our nurses will fall into that, our tech support people fall into that. Our comptroller, um, falls into that particular bucket of people. So there's a fair number of people that fit into it. It's really, um, support services, we think of what does it look like behind the scenes? So they're not necessarily out in front of students every day. They are behind the scenes people that typically don't have a face because when we walk into school, we don't necessarily see them. But they're uber-important to the operations of the, the district. The next bucket I look at or next kind of key components, I consider them district requirements. So to me, I carry those, um, in more of a reddish bucket. And yeah, uh, the reason I do that is if we do not have these, we will not be able to run school. So we have to have sure, insurance, property liability and workers' comp. If we don't carry that and something happens, we're going to be in a real problem. Um, retiree agreements, we're contractually obligated to provide those. And if we don't, we'll get sued and lose. So we need to do that. We need to transport our students. We need to have substitute teachers, um, utilities. We need to be able to heat the building, have the lights on, types of things. So I look at that, um, in a little bit different light. So when we talk about, if we were to say we're going to do a five percent budget cut across the board, I would look at these things and say we can't touch those. Like that, that doesn't fall into that five percent category. We have to have these things and this is what they cost or this is what the projected cost is.
Do the red and the green account for all of your expenditures from Fund Ten?
So everything that we're looking at on this particular side is Fund Ten.
Yeah, 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 okay, sorry.
Yep. So the next one in yellow is Fund Twenty-seven transfer. And the reason it's up there is it's our next biggest single line item. And it's really based on Fund Twenty-seven, which we'll talk about below. Um, we have an estimated cost for open enrollment students out, estimated voucher program. You can see department budgets, that's just a large bucket. That's buildings and grounds and teaching and learning and student services and HR. So right now, it's just a large bucket of dollars that I estimate we're probably going to be around there when we allocate to everybody. Building budgets is a little bit more tight, um, because we have a Third Friday count and building budgets are typically built off of an estimated student population and then a per-dollar amount, um, provided to that. So there's an elementary dollar amount, a middle school dollar amount, a high school dollar amount, middle school athletics activities, high school athletics activities. So we just simply cast that forward, plug that in as a holding point for now. Capital projects, um, in talking with, um, Casey prior to him leaving, he said it was about a million dollars. So I plop a million dollars in there and we'll take a look at what we can all try to accomplish under that. Um, it could be more, it could be less, um, but around a million is what we'll target. The additional grant expenses, this is what I, I accidentally referenced when I was talking about revenues. These are the grants broken out and this is everything outside of personnel. So Title One is estimated to be three-hundred-fifty thousand dollars in revenue. We have some individuals plugged into that, but a hundred forty-six thousand at this point is unaccounted for outside of personnel. Same with Title Two, that's all teacher training. So that is pretty much just allocated for teacher training. Um, Title Three is related to English language learners. Title Four, um, is really more of how do we reach students? So there's some technology components, there's some screener components that can fit inside of that. I'll come back to the middle part. The lower portion is Fund Twenty-seven, so this is special education. It fits all of the same model. Left-hand side is revenues. So when we talked about that increase from thirty percent to forty-five percent reimbursement, that falls under this four hundred or three million, four-hundred-fifty thousand dollar amount. And then you can see a couple of other components in there. The IDEA grant is our federal, um, special education students grant provided through DPI. On the right-hand side, the same model. Up, up top is, um, salaries and benefits for all of those employee groups that fall under, um, special education. Our district requirements, we still have retiree agreements with teachers who are or were special education teachers. We have transportation for special education students and we have substitutes for special education teachers and educational assistance. So all that same model still exists. What's a little bit different is they don't necessarily have departments underneath that. We really categorize them by is it aid-eligible, so zero-one-one? Or is it non-aid-eligible? So DPI breaks that out. So in the revenue component, when we talk about thirty percent to forty-five percent, not everything we spend in special education is allowed to be reimbursed by DPI. So if we have anything involving legal, that is not reimbursed. Oftentimes, transportation for a traveling teacher, so we might have a special education teacher who does some work at Ben Franklin and then does some work at Countrydale. We pay them mileage to move back and forth. DPI does not allow that as a reimbursable expense. So oftentimes, we're trying to balance, can we move some of that into the grant? Because the grant will pay for that. But there are times when not everything fits in there nice and neat. So that falls into that zero-one-nine. So we really look at it from what's reimbursable to what's not. The key thing about special education is all of it relates to an IEP, right? So we're really going to work to say, a ream of paper can be bought for everybody. We should buy that out of general education. Unless it's like a really thick piece of paper for some dexterity purpose that a special education student would need or a Braille book would be bought out of there to buy a regular reading book that every other student could read, we should buy all that out of general education dollars and maximize the use of those as much as possible. So really, when I look at all of this combined, all of those parameters, we're at a negative balance of one-hundred-forty-one thousand, two-hundred-ninety-five dollars. At this point in time, that doesn't bother me whatsoever because I'm pretty sure I'm considering, um, I'm being pretty conservative on open enrollment in. We're probably going to get some additional resident students. And because we're growing in population, that actually means revenue. Um, if you're a district who's declining in enrollment, oftentimes a growth in resident from one year to the next simply wipes out what's called a whole harmless where the state keeps you flat. So you're typically just trading which pot of money it comes from, but you're not really gaining any. In the case of us, we're growing, so that does mean actual revenue. So I feel fine with that. I budget everybody at family health and family dental. I'm a hundred percent sure we're not going to get everybody to take family health and family dental. I just don't know or don't have any historical data to say sixty percent do or thirty percent do or ninety-five percent do. So I know that that's not going to happen. And I know we're probably going to have some additional turnover. That's probably going to reduce some of our salary overall. The key component that I'm really waiting for is what happens on February fifteenth on or about when the governor comes out with his budget proposal. So that's the first part. And then the second part, I'm waiting to hear how does the legislator react to that? And that will give me some more knowledge of, does the two hundred, one hundred fifty in regular ed and thirty to forty-five and special ed percentage-wise, is that on par with where we think we're going to end up? Or is that on par with what the governor's presenting? And everybody seems to be totally fine with that. So again, at this point, it's, it's very fluid, but, um, it's something I really start building in November and I like it, to me, it's just something that I change. Now, I don't go in and update this document every day as things change, but it's something I circle back to every few weeks and take a look at, well, how has this value changed or how has this changed? So I'll just give you one more, um, piece, like on utilities. Um, I'm taking a look with, out Casey here, um, right now of putting LED lights in some of our buildings. So LED lights typically take your lighting cost and drop it by sixty-some percent in any particular year. So, um, if we are able to put those in in a few buildings, will that drop their utility or our overall utility cost? Yeah, does it cost us some dollars to put those in? Absolutely. So then you take a look at, what is the payback period? Is it worth it over a certain period of time? And then you determine, like, is it the right move? Is it not the right move? So, um, we're taking a look at some of that. So utilities might have some of that adjustment coming in there. But I also know that we were raised by twelve percent as all of us as homeowners Uh, but I also know that we were raised by 12%, as all of us as homeowners, or anybody that has an electric bill is going to get raised 12% too. Um, so, we factor that into that as well.
Will, um, will this be what this document looks like for us term, in terms of assumptions every year? For instance, will you assume every year at this time that everybody's going to get insurance? Or, everybody's going to get health insurance?
I probably will, um, especially at this January point. I'd rather be uber-conservative than put some of those estimates in. As we move further along, or as I really gain some more years in turn, I'm able to gain some historical data, January probably still stays, stays the same. But as we get to May and June, we probably start factoring some of those particular pieces in. Um, I won't necessarily do it on a body, but I would be able to take that green section at the top and say, "We have 20 new people in there. 50% of them are going to take family health." So, I would just adjust it within there and pull off a couple hundred thousand dollars and say, "Well, this is where we are here." We estimate that to be at 4,005, or 40,500,000. So.
Wait, my understanding is that existing staff have their policy as they currently have it. It's only the new staff that you're loading?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Only the new staff.
Yeah, I don't, I don't take any existing staff and make an estimate on what they're going to take. I, they're all flat. So, if, an employee who currently exists, all I'm building is their increased salary, and then the benefits that are related to the salary. So, WRS, FICA, those types of things. I don't adjust their insurance. Will some of them change? Yep, absolutely.
That makes a lot more sense.
They're going to change. So, yeah, we're just focusing on the new employees.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
This just emphasizes to me how important it is, as Linda always reminds us, that we need to be advocating, um, to our, our legislators about the importance of, um, adequately reimbursing special education and increasing our, um, revenue limit for students. So, everybody contact your people.
Yeah, I think we've fallen from like 12th to 25th over the last couple of years alone, um, and per student spending. As a state.
The state, yeah.
Anybody have questions? Comments?
I guess, um, I mean, it looks in good shape, considering how conservative it is, and I don't see the fiscal cliff that we had talked about.
I didn't get that. Could you try again?
Is your, like, activating word fiscal cliff?
That's my trigger.
I thought it'd be safe.
I'm sorry, what were you saying?
I'm saying, I'm, we don't have a fiscal cliff staring at us as we had maybe heard, but I didn't expect to really see it here in Franklin, given our growth and past budgets. So, um, I think it's a, it's a good place to start.
Well, the, the one piece I would add, and where the word fiscal cliff might come in, um, is CPI is 8%. So, it's been certified, so that negotiation piece, um, that the state still allows is at 8%. And right now, I'm estimating four.
Four, yeah.
I'm not advocating for anything. I'm, I can put four in there and feel reasonably comfortable at this particular point in time. Um, but if I were to put 8% in, we're probably looking at something quite a bit higher than that 100 or $200,000 in the red. We're probably looking somewhere around like $2 million in the red, give or take, um, just by bumping that up 4%. So, again, I'm not advocating, I'm just kind of putting it out there what that would look like, um, at that 8% mark.
And can I, I mean, I looked at the levy, it's 25.4 million in this year, and you're projecting 25.8. Granted, that's not looking at all funds, just the general fund. So, that's kind of where you're aiming in terms of?
Uh, I guess I, not necessarily aiming. How I calculated that was taking, what is that, $200 per student? So, when we plug that in with our 4,500 students, that's about $900,000. Based on the percentage of general aid versus property tax in previous years, I pretty much applied that $900,000 kind of on that same split. And we're pretty close to being 50/50, um, from an aid standpoint to property tax. So, it broke out pretty close to about 450 here and 450 here, or whatever that number, um, happens to be when you do 200 times the 45, 50, whatever it was exactly. Um, but I just applied it pretty much on the same percentage, just given where we were.
I, I'd like to make a comment. I think this gets closer and closer to where we want to be with transparency, and to have this budget be a living document that people can access and, and look at in real time as, as things change, and as, as you change it, um, and, and we work on it, um, rather than it being more static as it, as it has been in the past. So, I, I appreciate that. Does anybody have, uh, further comment or questions? All right, uh, the treasurer's report, thank you. Uh, the treasurer's report is available in Board Docs Library. Item 10, School Board Liaison Reports, Personnel Policy, Policy 3710, School Food Service, Dr. Khan and Mr. Cromie, please.
Yep, so I will, um, just start with showing you what a redline version of this particular policy will look like, um, and then we will go from there. So, um, really, the only thing that needs to change on the policy is going to be this last particular piece, where we're reconfirming it on January 25th of 2022, from the actual policy standpoint. Where some adjustments were made really fall into the administrative rules. So, administrative rules are how we enact your board policy. Um, and these really stem around, um, two items. This one is simply just renaming the position at the top. It's an arbitrary piece. I'm hoping you're okay with that. In the middle of this particular page, page three, um, DPI used to do the audits, um, or federal rules and regulations being reviewed every three years. They've made that requirement to five years now, so that's just something they've implemented. We're just applying that inside of the document. The key pieces are really going to fall down into this last, um, um, component around, "How do we handle a child who has a negative food balance?" And so, um, there was a different, um, plan at elementary, middle, and high school. We've really changed it all to be, a child in a negative food balance will continue to receive a lunch. They're not going to get a cheese sandwich and an apple. They're not going to get a brown bag that says, "I'm different than you." We're going to let them go through the lunch line. We're going to take it. We're going to record it inside of their school fees. It's going to be a negative balance. The other piece that we added in here is really how we're going to go about collecting that. And all I did was move it from the bottom and just apply it to each of the sections. It's really the same. Our school, the, the lead cook at each school is going to, um, call a family a couple of times. They're still going to get the email. So, when my kids get low, I get the email. Um, sometimes I remember to send it on the first day. Sometimes it's on the second day. Um, and I still write checks. I'm one of those crazy people that hates paying fees, so I'm a check writer if I have to.
And I got a notice today, so.
So, that, that part's all going to stay the same. So, that's all, that's just part of how we operate the software. That's all going to stay the same. But again, if a, uh, student's a negative, lead cook will call one time, two times. At that point, they're going to turn it over to the administrator. It's the same process we're using now. It's working very effectively. We're at about $800 in negative balance. We were there at the beginning of December. We're actually $25 or $30 less at this particular date and time. Um, and as, uh, was alluded to by Mr. Kafka, we have some dollars that we can help alleviate some of that for parents who really are struggling, or families who are struggling, um, to alleviate that. So, we'll check again next week, and we're going to do some comparisons and, and determine how exactly we're going to pass that, um, those dollars out. But ultimately, it's not a huge concern at $800. Like, it's, we're going to be totally fine with that. Um, it also does get added, though, so when a child wants to buy homecoming tickets, yep, that food service balance is going to be in there. It's going to have to be paid off. Um, we had a couple of people really, like, talk a lot about that to us, and when it came to October, and they want their homecoming tickets, and yes, you have these outstanding fees. Could you please get those paid? I don't remember receiving those, and we go through the conversation. So, um, in any case, all, the key component is we don't want to ostracize a child, or we don't want to point out the fact that a child has a negative food balance. We want them to look like every other child that's going through the lunch line, receive their lunch. We understand it's a hardship. We just don't want to take it out on the child.
Angie, please.
I support these changes. It's the right thing to do. I would also just add to, um, loop in with the Education Foundation, who has the Student in Need Fund in addition to those dollars, to have, um, accessing that fund be part of the process of handling, um, outstanding debts.
Linda, please.
But this doesn't, I mean, they still have, uh, access to free reduced lunch, right? These aren't parents that, these are parents that would not qualify for that.
These are parents that do not qualify. Yep, if you qualify for a free lunch, yep, lunch is free. If you qualify for reduced, it's still a 40-cent charge. Um, so, they would still get charged that 40 cents. So, there's potential that there are some children who are in the negative balance, who are on the reduced, um, portion. Um, but again, if, if a student, a student is on the free, um, lunch program, yeah, this will not affect them, because they'll be getting that lunch already free.
I did notice that they can't buy the à la carte, though. I don't know anything about what à la carte looks like versus the regular line. Is there any, does that look bad too, if I can't buy à la carte?
Yep, so, correct. We do not allow them to buy à la carte. À la carte isn't required. So, a student being able to get a bag of chips or a Gatorade isn't required. Um, so, we are providing the lunch, but no, we're not doing that. So, um, I would say if we were to think about à la carte, there's a fair number of parents in our community who are already telling their children they can't buy à la carte anyways.
Yes, okay.
And you can actually shut off à la carte purchasing.
Really?
Under their, yes. I would love to tell you how the process works, but I don't know. But you can request through food service that à la carte not be charged as part of their, like, swiping your card, that it be cash only.
No, you can't make a call tonight.
We need to interrupt the meeting.
All right, we need to make a call.
Anybody else have further questions?
I move that we accept Policy 37, 3710, as I meant, I meant presented.
I second. Our motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Dr. Khan. Any further, uh, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, Board Liaison Reports.
I continue to enjoy liaising with, uh, Mr. Blessington about, um, curriculum and learning issues. We have been doing some deep dives on literacy, and I've been learning a lot, and I'm really excited about, um, some of the, um, directions and, and ideas he has, and so I'd be happy to talk with any of you about them. But, um, it's been, it's been, we've been having some really good conversations about literacy.
Linda, please.
There hasn't been an SWSA meeting, but I did send the, uh, the slide deck. Did everybody get it?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you studied, of course.
I studied it in detail.
All right. I was going to have a quiz, but I'm not going to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I can report from the Franklin Education Foundation. We had, um, kind of an exciting meeting last week. I mean, they're all exciting, but, um, we were able to change our scholarships. So, every year, the Franklin Education Foundation offers historically four scholarships, uh, to graduating seniors. And this year, because of, you know, an abundance of funds and a need that we perceived, we have increased that now to six scholarships. So, we've added a scholarship for students pursuing, um, an engineering field, and a scholarship for students pursuing an arts field. And that's a very broad, um, visual performing, um, any, you know, kind of arts. So, in addition to the healthcare, future education.
Tech and trades.
Trades, and community service. Ooh, I had them all. Good job. Um, so, that was just, that was really exciting to be able to offer that to students in the community, and those are posted. So, if you know of any seniors, um, please encourage them to apply for scholarships. Um, and then just a plug for our Education Foundation, um, events coming up. The Valentines that you can send to staff, our consignment sale on March 18th, and the golf outing, which we talked about last time, is the wrong date. It's the Friday, June 16th, whatever the Friday is before Father's Day. That is Education Foundation. And I guess, as long as I'm talking, we had a, um, on the liaison to the Student Wellness Committee, which met today. That is a committee that's come back and full of life and full of wellness. And so, you'll be starting to see some more of that in our communications and things, and we're open to all ideas, so. That's it.
Great. Anybody else? All right, Community Engagement Reports. Angie, do you? Oh, I thought you went to a meeting.
I would like to have heard.
Oh, I did. I went to the, um, the Health Department have, is having some. Ms. Benn and I went to this meeting. They're, they're sort of doing the strategic planning around community health in Franklin. And so, um, we've met with other community representatives to sort of help look at their data and discuss, um, what areas they should be focusing on to improve the overall health in Franklin. It was interesting. They have a lot of, a lot of interesting data. Thank you for reminding me that I did that yesterday.
You were so worried about who you were going to call to cancel à la carte.
I mean, I'm really just all over.
I did go to lunch with the mayor with, um, Annalee and Andy and Jessica, um, on Monday, and, uh, we talked about, um, a variety of things. Nothing exciting enough to report on, I don't think.
Mike's daughter is appearing as Marion, the librarian, in the Forte Theater production of The Music Man this weekend.
And Angie's daughter is.
You, Lila McCaughney, she's the mayor's wife.
Yes.
Lots of Franklin kids involved in that production.
Franklin kids.
Everyone should.
It should be fun.
I happen to know it's 7:00 o'clock on both Friday and Saturday night, and 2:00 on Sunday. And if anybody wants to help strike the set, it's at 3:30 on, on Sunday. Anybody else have Community Engagement Reports? All right, I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851C for discussion of teacher performance and per-district administrator self-evaluation.
So, moved.
Motion was made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Dr. Beer. All in favor? Oh, we have to have a roll call, please.
I vote aye. Mr. Spray?
Aye.
Mrs. Wickowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Aye.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Dr. Beer?
Aye.
We are in closed session at 7:46.
Thank you. We are back in open session at 9:08. But we'll wait until we turn the microphones back on. Is it on the whole time?
I don't know if I would have known I would have sang.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Note that with the present. Is it recording?
It's on, yep.
Okay. All right, uh, so we're back in open session at 9:08. Uh, no action was taken in closed session. Item 12, School Board Member Comments. Does anybody have any comments? Thank you. Future agenda items, uh, FPMS, FLL presentation, the robotics team, uh, wanted to present, um, to us.
The Little League, first Little, or Latin Little.
Lego League.
Lego League, oh, yeah.
Not baseball, Legos.
Yeah.
They're really excited.
So, it's like the, the middle school robotics. So, they will present next meeting. 21, 22 Financial Audit Results, State Convention Reports, At-Risk Status Update, Summer School Course Approvals, Health Clinic Alternate, Ben Franklin Elementary School Presentation, Academic and Technical Excellence Scholarship Recipient Approvals. All right, I'm looking for a.
I also want to suggest some future agenda items. Um, I think it was pretty clear with the, uh, the building that we, we lack a process for really approving building projects. Is it, maybe we might consider putting together a policy on how building projects should come forward? And I could draft something up and share it with you, but I'm thinking.
I don't think that's a board issue. It's not a board issue. It's operations.
It can be a policy on how, the, the process of building, how buildings are approved.
Can we talk?
And I can suggest, you know, what it might look like, so you can, then you can decide. But I think it's, clearly, we had a problem with that, and this.
I, I, I think that I.
Just talk to me about it.
Yeah.
I'll talk to you about, good. Second item is, with this proposed building and the city's role, I think we should think about putting together maybe a memorandum of understanding with the city in relation to recreation, similar to what we have with the, um, the school, um, resource officer. We have a memorandum of understanding in relation to that, and it might be beneficial if we were to have a similar memorandum of the city in regards to recreation, because clearly, there's a sheer role there.
I think it's certainly something to, I think it's certainly something to talk to. Um, that is something I, uh, that we talked with, um, Mayor Olson about. Not that specifically, but, um, but community ed and rec is something we, and parks is something we talked about with, um, Mayor Olson. And, and going further on that is, is certainly a. And going further on that is certainly a good thing to talk about in more partnership with the city. Especially in something like that.
I was surprised to hear that it was West Dallas, West Milwaukee that had the good building, the good program.
I'm interested to learn more about it.
Yeah, I wonder if Andy had anything to do with that?
Oh, yeah, he was there.
I did go visit that building because I was curious about it. I was surprised to hear all the programs in.
I was too.
One additional item that's not in the future agenda items that just came up this week that will probably be coming through on the 8th is the fiber contract, as we're sharing fiber with the city in an area. So didn't make this list because it's been new news, but that should be on the February 8th agenda.
And also, I assume there's going to be something soon about transportation?
Yes, possibly on the 8th, but there is, I would say the 25th.
Our contract for transportation.
Oh, I was thinking about the city.
Sorry, no, no.
New topic.
Starting his own bus company. For the city.
Looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 9:13. Thank you, everyone.